Okay, if everyone wants to get seated, I think we are going to be able to go ahead and start in just a few minutes here. Oh my gosh, this is so exciting. Look how many people are here tonight. I have to say that our organizational meeting on December 1st is always the best meeting we ever have. So I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we are going to have the posting of the colors by the Mason Police Department Honor Guard. So if you all would please stand. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. You may be seated. Well, we're just going to get right down to business here and start doing the things we're here to do. And I'm so glad so many people have been able to come out tonight because this is a really exciting time for all the new council members and returning council members. So I believe we are going to start with the Oath of Office administered to our new council members first. And I believe we go in alphabetical order, so I think Joy Bennett is going to come first. And Jeff Forbes, who is our Law Director, will administer that oath.
I, Joy Bennett, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Mason, Ohio, and to faithfully, honestly, and impartially perform the duties of the Office of Councilmember for the City of Mason to the best of my ability.
Joy, if you would like to get any more pictures before you have a seat in your new chair, you want to do any more pictures? Okay, next, we're going to have Scott Gibson. If you will please come forward.
I, Scott Gibson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Mason, Ohio, antifaithfully, honestly, and impartially, perform the duties of the Office of Councilmember for the City of Mason to the best of my ability.
Scott, before you sit down, you want any more pictures? You sure? Okay, okay, all right. So our next council member will be Josh Strickula. If you would please come forward or go forward.
I, Josh Strickula, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Mason, Ohio, and to faithfully, honestly, and impartially, perform the duties of the Office of Councilmember for the City of Mason, to the best of my ability.
Josh, did you want to take any more pictures? Oh my God. Okay then. Well, congratulations to our new council members. Let's give them all a big round of a hand. Okay, so now that we're all sitting up here, we are going to have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Chance.
Here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Councilmember Hackey.
Here.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Strickula.
Here.
Mayor Spath.
Here. I'm going to tell you, I'll make sure you turn your mics on. Just in case. There we go, okay. Okay, next, we have the election of mayor. And I just wanted to, actually, I wanted to say just a couple of things before I stepped down as mayor. And it really kind of got ridiculous, my thoughts. And so I finally just wrote something real quick, and I hope you all will just let me indulge me and let me just read this because it's real important to me. And then we will have the election of the new mayor. So, actually, just the other day, someone asked me if it was going to be bittersweet for me to step down. And I automatically really thought to myself, no, it's not. Because how can it be bitter when you get to be the mayor of the fourth best place to live for families? And it's, you know, it's not always been real easy or fun sitting in this chair. But the sweet definitely has outweighed the bitter. But when I was first elected as mayor, I had several goals in mind. First, I wanted to bring civility, respect, and decorum back to our council meetings and to be fair and treat each council member equally. Then I wanted to try to repair all the connections and partnerships with organizations and businesses that were either severed or broken. And I wanted to try to gain the trust back from our citizens. And also, I wanted to have the feel of community again with our residents and our businesses and everyone who comes into Mason to live, work, and play. I knew that City Council could only accomplish these goals by working together with each other and with our staff. I'm pretty proud of what we accomplished in the last two years. I know it's not perfect, and there's still much work to be done, but I hope you all feel I have led in a way that sets the stage for only greater things to come. A friend of mine recently posted this on Facebook, and she said, "Leadership is not about being the best. Leadership is about making everyone else better." I hope we have all become better together. So I just want to say thank you to my husband, John, who's hiding in the back somewhere, I think, and all of our kids and grandkids, and all of my extended family and friends who have really supported me during these last two years. I want to say thank you to our professional and gracious staff, who've now put up with me for about 10 years. And I'm so blessed to know so many wonderful city staff and been able to work with them. I actually just saw a police officer not too long ago who actually said to me that he didn't want me to leave. And I said, "That touched me so very much." Most of all, thank you to everyone in our community who took the time to encourage me when it was tough, and those who complimented to me in my role as mayor so very generously over the last two years. I'm very humbled that so many people encouraged me to stay on as mayor for another two years. But I know the foundation has been laid for our next mayor and vice mayor to continue with bigger and better things to come. It has been such an honor and a privilege for me to serve as mayor for this wonderful community. So again, I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me to serve the last two years as mayor of Mason City Council. To thank you. So now, let's get on to the good stuff, and let's have the election of mayor. So I am going to ask for a motion to nominate. Does anybody have a nomination for a mayor? Yes?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilwoman Nelson for mayor.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any additional nominations? Okay, so I need a motion to end nominations.
So move, move.
Second. Okay. All right, so I believe we're going to have a roll call. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson? Or Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Mayor Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
No, you say yes.
Yes. I didn't know if I needed to abstain.
All right, great. Say yay! All right, so now we will have the mayor's oath of office. So I have you come forward, and I believe you're going to have Judge Peeler, who will swear you in.
I, Diana Nelson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Mason, Ohio, and to faithfully, honestly, and impartially, perform the duties of the Office of Mayor for the City of Mason, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Well, that was fun. Now I need a nomination to elect the vice mayor for the City of Mason. Does anyone have a nomination?
Mayor?
Yes.
To nominate Councilmember Chance.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? A roll call. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Are there any others? Motion to close nominations. Roll call.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Okay, so it passed. Congratulations. Vice Mayor Chance, would you like to take the oath of office?
I state your name.
I, Ashley Chance. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Mason, Ohio, and to faithfully, honestly, and impartially, perform the duties of the Office of Vice Mayor for the City of Mason, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I'm not always here, so I'd like just real quick, if family and friends would just come get a gift we didn't get, everybody would give us.
Congratulations. I am honored and humbled to be able to serve as the mayor for the City of Mason. Since joining City Council eight years ago, I worked diligently with several municipal-driven organizations representing Mason on the local, regional, state, and national level. Regionally, I represent our community as the Warren County Municipal League President. The organization educates state and local leaders on issues impacting our city. As a prior board member for the Ohio Municipal League, representing Mason before the Ohio General Assembly, I liaised with Mason before state-elected offices. Additionally, I currently function as an advocate representing the interests of taxpayers on the Ohio Municipal League Tax Committee, which impacts how our city taxes are regulated. Finally, I serve nationally as the vice chair of the National League of Cities Small Cities Council, gaining insight and developing the best practices for cities across the United States. For the past eight years, my top priorities have been my family, as well as serving the City of Mason. Just as a mother knows, her job is never done. And I look forward to continuing my work for the city for years to come. I also want to say one last thing. I was asked to promote the Nutcracker. It's all jazzed up, and our family has gone to this every year. It is September... I'm sorry, December 17th. So if you'd like to go, you can go check it out. It's the Mason Dance Center Nutcracker. It's quite a tradition in our community. Now it's time for council comments. Does anyone have any comments or would like to say anything?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say congratulations, because I didn't get to do that earlier. I want to say congratulations to our new members, Councilmember Bennett, Councilmember Gibson, and Councilmember Strickula. I'm not going to forget you. And also, congratulations to Mayor Nelson now and Vice Mayor Chance. And it's just really exciting to have this group together. I know that we're going to do a lot of great things over the next two years. And I'm just going to say, Councilmember Hackey, I'm sorry, you and I are out of the loop. We don't have anything to be excited about. I'm sorry. Maybe next time, yes. Thank you.
The reason why she's mayor and I'm vice mayor, because she did all of that stuff. I am just honored to, I love this city, I love this community. I've been here since 1980. I've seen Mason grow tremendously. And I think I can echo, you know, I have watched it prosper into a city that, it's kind of, I hardly recognize it, but you do recognize it by the DNA of our small city. And we still have that heartbeat of community, and I absolutely love it. And our staff is second to none in regards to making sure we operate, and we still have that sense of community. But I'm honored to sit up here, and it's kind of humbling, and I wouldn't believe that I'd ever be vice mayor of Mason. But I can't wait. Again, I just love this community, want to serve the citizens of it. And I always have an open-door policy. If anyone ever needs anything, please reach out. But secondly, I'd like to thank Councilmember Speth now. She led us for the last two years tremendously. It was an honor to sit up here with her while she led this group. Because as some of the things she mentioned in her speech or her talk earlier, it was something that we needed. It was necessary, and she did it with grace, she did it with compassion. And we are, thank you for doing that. And congratulations to Mayor Nelson and then all the two newly elected, and glad to have Josh back with us. And so thank you, guys. And I'd encourage everybody to go out to Christmas in Mason tonight. We're going to go light up a tree and have a good time, so thank you.
Councilmember Hackey?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would like to congratulate you. Very happy to see you in the mayor's seat. I know that's a big deal. It's awesome to have you there, so congratulations to you. Vice Mayor Chance, that's going to take some getting used to saying, but absolutely thrilled to have you as part of our leadership. Joy, Scott, welcome. I still remember the first night in this seat. And it's such an amazing experience, soak it in. And I'm looking forward to working with you guys for at least the next two years, maybe four, six? No more than six, I promise you that. And lastly, Councilmember Speth. As the vice mayor has said, stole most of my thunder. Thank you. What an amazing job you've done. We needed to come do some, we needed to do some soul-searching, and we needed to do some things to move our city forward and put a lot of stuff behind us, and you made that possible. So thanks for all your hard work. Thanks for everything. And thanks for everybody for coming out. This is a testament to what an amazing city we've got. Not just the representatives, but the residents, the business owners, and everybody else who's here. Our illustrious judge here, thanks for being here. To our Honor Guard, did an amazing job. Our police and fire, thank you all. I'm just honored to be sitting here amongst this great group, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Sorry, I totally, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my lovely bride and my kids. Because, I mean, they're, you know, it's awkward hours a lot of times when we're serving in this capacity. And she's my rock, and she keeps everything rocking and rolling at home, so thank you for everything.
Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. I just wanted to say how much, what an honor it is to serve. I've really enjoyed meeting and getting to know our staff. I've had some amazing tours. And I'm just super impressed with all the things that happen behind the scenes that we don't even know are happening. Thank you. I just wanted to say how much, what an honor it is to serve. I've really enjoyed meeting and getting to know our staff. I've had some amazing tours, and I'm just super impressed with all the things that happen behind the scenes that we don't even know are happening, because they just happen so smoothly. So thank you to everyone who's spent so much time and answered all of my questions so far. I have plenty more, don't worry. And then I also wanted to thank all of my friends, all of the volunteers, all the people who've worked on my campaign. Many of you are here tonight. Many of you are watching from home. Countless hours sweating, freezing, lots of time on phones. This is a group effort. When you get elected, it takes a village, really, and so, thank you. And finally, thanks to my husband, Scott, and my kids, Sam, Anna, and Luke, for supporting me and for being good sports. Congratulations, Diana, Mayor Nelson, and Vice Mayor Chance. I'm excited to work with you, and thank you so much, Councilmember Speth, for the years that you've given and the way that you've led these last two years especially. I'm really excited to move forward.
Councilmember Gibson, did you want to?
Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I am humbled and honored to be considered and elected to serve you all. It is really humbling to thank that I'd be able to sit up here and serve alongside of you. Congratulations to every one of you, because at some point you had to do this. Joy, congratulations. I'm honored to be able to serve with you, so us being the new boys and girls on the block, thank you. And Josh, congratulations. Mayor Nelson, congratulations. I'm honored to be able to serve under you. And then Barb, I just wanted to say, from somebody who wasn't a council member at the time that you served, you served our city well, and thank you for that. So it was an honor to be just a citizen of Mason under you. You did a great job. And Ashley, congratulations. Vice Mayor, thank you. Congratulations. So, and my wife, of course, who was my campaign manager, and she almost quit several times. So thank you, and for all my friends who are out here and family, it's an honor to be here. Thank you very much.
Councilman Stricula.
Mayor, thank you. So I guess I'll preface all of this with, four years ago was kind of a different environment, and so when I was asked to speak four years ago, I quickly said no, because we just wanted to get out of there. So, but I was remiss, because I didn't even get a chance to say thank you then, so this kind of counts twice. So I'll just say thank you a couple of times. Congratulations, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Looking forward to the next two years and the work that we can do. Councilmember Speth, just thank you so much for your service, for what you did for this community. Congratulations, Councilmember Bennett and Councilmember Gibson, on your election. And grateful is just the word that I would, is all I can think about. Grateful to the community for the opportunity to serve again for another four years, and thank you for that opportunity. I'm grateful to my family. My parents are here, and the support that they've given me over the, I mean, from the beginning, sometimes support with me kicking and screaming, but they gave it to me. My in-laws couldn't make it, but I want to thank them for convincing my wife that it was okay to settle 16 years ago. And I think we turned out all right. And to my boys, thanks for all your work and effort and everything that you guys do. And when we talked about running again, because we knew the time commitments, all that stuff, I asked them, I said, "Well, what do you think? Should we do it again?" They said, "Absolutely." I said, "Well, why?" And they said, "Because we love parades." So, that happens twice a year, once a year, right? And then, of course, to my wife, Holly, just thank you so, so much for everything. Thank you. That's all. Thanks. Sorry. And then thanks for four years ago, too.
Okay. I just want to take a second to also congratulate our new council members. We have a phenomenal council right now, and I'm super excited to work with all of you and to see our future together and to see the great things that we can do. I also want to say thank you to Councilmember Speth. It is difficult at times to serve in this seat, and you did a great job, so I wanted to say thank you. Now, City Manager, did you want to?
Yes, I just have one part in this evening, and I always fail at it, it seems like. So this depends on the audience. We're going to ask council, after their motion to adjourn, for everyone to just stay where you are. I know friends, family, want to greet your loved ones, and ask council to come up to the front, so we can get a series of group photos before anyone leaves or hugs or stuff. If we can all do that, this will end my year perfectly. I'll get this one thing done right one time. That's all I have. Post your motion to adjourn. That's what we'd ask for.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. We have to do a roll call.
Nope, I think you are adjourned.
All right, we are adjourned.